There, Mr. -- not Mr. Voelz in here. Yeah, Sean, do you want to tell us generally how this came over from the council? I mean, from the commission?
This is for auto accessories business. We ran it to corner there previously approximately two years ago. If you remember, you had a auto detail shop come through at the same as a special use. As you all know, special use is a use that's not allowed by the zoning ordinance and they have to come before you. In this case, the zoning ordinance allows auto accessories with conditions. And so before you -- they came before the planning commission to get a list of conditions. He's agreed to it. The applicant is here, if you have any questions. He's agreed to the conditions set by the planning commission and we've sent it up to city council for your review.
All right. You want to identify yourself and just briefly, because I think there is some concern about this legislation, so feel free to come to the microphone. If you filled out a card, sir, if you would, identify yourself, fill the card out and leave it with Ms. Whitby after you have a chance to both say hello and share a few things with us if you'd like.
Yes, sir. My name's Scott Holmes. I own Audio One in Little Rock. I'm looking to expand my business at this location. We do window tinning, car stereos, alarm systems, that type of thing for personal use.
Any council member?
Yeah, Mayor, I've had several phone calls from neighbors that are opposed to this business there, even with the conditions that we placed on it. They were still, although the planning commission affirmed it with nine votes, I've still had some opposition from the neighbors surrounding this area about this business going in there.
Let me just mention where we are. We are required to read this three separate times unless the rules are suspended. It takes six votes or a two-thirds majority to suspend the rules. So if for some reason it shouldn't get the suspension, first of all, a council member has to move that, that the rules be suspended. If that's not done, then it stays on the calendar until the next meeting where it has to be read and the same thing could happen. Obviously, it could be dealt with if two-thirds of the council decided to suspend the rules, but I'm not so sure what might take place as we go forward. But I just wanted you to know that if for some reason the rules aren't suspended, that doesn't mean that you fail. That means that, you know, there's another two weeks or the first council meeting next year, next year, yeah?
Sixteenth.
Well, and while we're at that, Mr. Carter, you know, things will hang on the agenda. Is that correct, or does everything need to be refiled that is not adopted?
I don't have any problem with them staying on the agenda. I know that this debate often comes up, but there is no reason why they can't stay on the agenda.
Let me tell you what my practice has been, and that is when there's a change of the council. You know, so every other year when there is a change of the council, and I've generally felt that they, things ought to be refiled since you've got a new council. But when there is this year, when there's no change of the council in terms of people, then I certainly didn't feel that there was a need to, you know, refile everything that had been filed. So unless you have an objection, that will remain. My practice is that unless there is a change of the body of the city council, there really isn't any need from one year or another to reestablish the menu.
I think that's perfectly reasonable.
Okay. All right, any other questions? We've read once, any motion?
You're the sponsor, do you have any recommendations?
One of the reasons that I sponsored this is, and I really hadn't had a chance to get into any real details with it, I will be happy to as we move a little bit more in talking with the council about this, is, you know, because of our city attorney's advice that we needed to resolve this at the council level and that, you know, these kind of decisions had to be made by us. And so at this point, I have no recommendation, but I'll be happy to make one as we move forward with this. But obviously, if we're not going to suspend the rules, then we'll have some more time to try to be prepared to make a recommendation to the council, but I'll be happy to. I do know that there, and obviously they can speak for themselves, that there is some concern, as Alderman, as our Alderman Bryant voiced about one of the council members who represents that ward. And I'll let any of the other council members speak too.
Well, I've also, I mean, I've had tons of phone calls also.
So we need to...
You know, opposition, like I told you, you know, there's nothing against you, it's just that, you know, I'm representative of them and so I'm just speaking for my constituents.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
So let me suggest that, you know, that there is some work that perhaps needs to
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
be done.
In order to reclassify a certain property located in Lakewood Heights addition in
So at this point, you know, without hearing a motion to suspend the rules, it'll stay on the agenda. It'll be on the council's agenda for reading at the next, potential reading at the next
the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, from the present R-5 to R-1 classification by
council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
amendment number 7697 of the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
Ordinance 07-137, Alderman Height and Witcher.
Right, please call it.
This is an ordinance to reclassify a certain property located in Lakewood Heights addition
Mayor, quick note, one of the others, you'll tell them why.
to the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, from the present R-5 to R-1 classification by amendment number 7697 of the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Well, first of all, the, this was passed unanimously by the planning commission with Prove the suspended rules and place it on the second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant?
nine affirmative votes.
Yes.
Ross?
And then it's my knowledge that there was no opposition whatsoever to this ordinance
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
from the residents over in the Lakewood Drive, Lakewood Heights area.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
There was one, one property owner that chose not to participate, but this property owner
Yes.
In order to reclassify a certain property located in Lakewood Heights addition in
was not opposed to this legislation whatsoever, so.
the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, from the present R-5 to R-1 classification by
With that, I recommend that we move for adoption.
amendment number 7697 of the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Second?
Second.
On adoption, Ms. Whitby? Prove the suspended rules and place it on the third reading.
Bryant?
And I'll second that.
Yes.
And then I'll comment.
Ross? Bryant?
Yes.
Yes.
Robinson? Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
Thomas? Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Gaines? Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
In order to reclassify a certain property located in Lakewood Heights addition in the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, from the present R-5 to R-1 classification by amendment number 7697 of the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
Mayor, quick note, one of the others, you'll tell them why.
Well, first of all, the, this was passed unanimously by the planning commission with nine affirmative votes. And then it's my knowledge that there was no opposition whatsoever to this ordinance from the residents over in the Lakewood Drive, Lakewood Heights area. There was one, one property owner that chose not to participate, but this property owner was not opposed to this legislation whatsoever, so. With that, I recommend that we move for adoption. Second?
Second.
On adoption, Ms. Whitby?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 07-138, Alderman Thomas?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance to reclassify a certain property located approximately one mile east of the intersection of Dick Jeter Road and Highway 391 in the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, from I-1 to C-3 classification by amendment number 7697 of the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, first reading.
I'd like to move the rules suspended and place it on the second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
In order to reclassify a certain property located approximately one mile east of the intersection of Dick Jeter Road and Highway 391 in the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, from I-1 to C-3 classification by amendment number 7697 of the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, third and final reading.
On the question?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 07-139, Alderman Thomas?
Call it.
This is an ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a car sales lot in the C-4 zone for certain real property located at 2415 East Broadway in the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
I'd like to, I can amend it. I just move the rules suspended and place it on the second reading.
Second. Can we get this one and then I'll recognize you?
Okay.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
Okay, let me recognize Alderman Robinson now.
Looking at this legislation in section two, where it has the maximum number of cars, number two and three, right now, I'd like to somehow amend this where these cars also include personal vehicles as well as family members' vehicles, because code is having a problem when they go out to these used car lots and they have more cars than what the legislation requires. They'll say, that's, well, that's not for sale, the legislation says sales, that's my daughter's car, that's this one's car, or that one's car. So is it proper here to make this amendment?
Let me, the answer is yes. Mr. Wadley, did you hear what Alderman Robinson was talking about? Can you, you know, give us a little insight into this? And then, I don't know whether, you know, maybe, you know, maybe visit briefly with our city attorney. I don't know how quickly we can come up with something, but comment, please.
Yes, we recently, or the council recently allowed a car lot on East Broadway. You limited the number of cars on the lot for sale. We've gone out there and there have been more than that number of cars, but we're told those cars aren't for sale. So really, you can't decide which cars are for sale and which not, so.
So I guess my amendment would be the total number of cars, Mr. Carter?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
All right. Wait on him then. That's what you want to do, right?
Right, I just like...
He'll be right back to you, I sure do.
Okay, well, I just...
Don't reopen the budget? Huh? We gotta hear your motion on the budget?
We need a half a million dollars. We, we need a half a million dollars.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, he'll give, he'll be back here quick with y'all laughing. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just, yes, sir, city attorney.
Let me, let me take a run at this if I could. If we would change section, the subsection number two, instead of reading maximum forty cars on the front sales lot, maximum forty total cars on the front sales lot, whether or not such cars are actually for sale.
Okay.
What about the rear lot?
What about the rear lot?
That we put the similar amendment in, it says maximum of, maximum of twenty total cars to be repaired on the rear storage lot, whether or not such cars are being repaired as part of the business.
Is this currently a car lot now?
Wait, wait, wait. And I'll still second it.
You can second it. Second amendment, yes.
Excuse me?
They seconded your amendment.
Okay.
Who wants to discuss it? Alderman Thomas?
Is the applicant here?
No.
Go ahead.
Yes, he is.
He's here?
Oh, yes, sir. Would you like to address him?
I'd like to ask him a question, if that's gonna give him a real problem.
Yes, sir. You come over and state your name, please, sir.
Yes, sir, my name's Bobby Sanders.
And he'd like to ask you a question, go ahead.
Go ahead and state your amendment and see if that's gonna be a problem for him.
See if it's gonna be a problem for him.
Yeah, I just want to know before I vote.
The legislation is that the maximum, be it employees', cars', children's cars', et cetera, will be forty.
Do you understand?
Yes, sir.
Forty on the front and twenty on the back?
Yes, ma'am. No problem.
No problem, okay.
All right.
Code enforcement, y'all hear that? No problem, he says, with the maximum of forty on the front and twenty on the back.
And could also add concern to legislation, we're making an effort to clean up East Broadway and one of the problems we have are inoperable vehicles that are for long periods of time on the car lot. I know if you're allowing twenty cars on the back of that lot. And so with no timetable, I mean, you say no salvage, but you really haven't defined what a salvage vehicle is. I mean, is it wrecked back there and it's gonna sit back there a year waiting for repair? These are just some of the problems that we're addressing on East Broadway now, because it's clearly not defined. And we've got, so far we've issued approximately fifty citations between the interstate and the road city intersection because of these car lots.
Okay. So we need legislation as for the length of time repaired cars at the rear of the property? Is that what you're saying?
That's up to y'all, I'm just telling you, one of the problems that we constantly run into are inoperable vehicles that are left for extended amounts of time on these car lots, sometimes up to a year. Some of them are wrecked, some of them got body parts gone, but they're always there, quote, "for repair," even though they don't actually get repaired and removed from the lot until we have to try to take them to court.
Alderman Thomas, it would appear to me that with the conflicts that we're having with, with the car lots and the, and the planning, that perhaps this needs to go back to planning and then come forward with some accountability for these car lots, for lack of a better term, in terms of vehicles that are, that are inoperable that, and, you know, as we continue to approve car lots on Broadway, it appears to me from the planning, code enforcement's position, it only adds more problems to them in that they don't really have any way to enforce junk yards coming in on, for lack of a better term, I'm not implying that this is, don't get me wrong, sir, but parts places, we'll rephrase that, for automobiles on Broadway. So perhaps it needs to go to planning and let them review their, their ordinances or their, their policies, for lack, not order, their policies on, on car lots before we really start dealing with car lots anymore.
How was the vote of the planning commission? What was the?
Vote was nine, nine for it. But this is really for the car sales lot, car repairs allowed in C-4, and so the, he's before us right now as for the car sales lot, the front part of it. The planning commission has added conditions to the back part while, while they're there, saying limiting it to twenty vehicles. So C-4 allows car repair, it does not allow car sales without a conditional use. So he's really before us right now to do a conditional use for car sales and the planning commission has added conditions onto the back part of the property to make sure it doesn't get out of control on the car repair.
So what you're saying is this is more restrictive because of the need to, the desire to sell, sell the cars than what the zoning classification requires under its existing definition?
Correct. So if you, if you look at the old, this is an older picture from ninety-nine, those cars are gone. So he's cleaned up the slot, there's not, it looks like there's about fifty cars back there. There's, they're gone now and he's gonna be limited at twenty back there, but without this conditional use, he can put his money back there and call it a repair right now in that zone.
And I think that does it, and I think we had a vote here to limit the number of cars.
Well, I just, if, if we send this back to the planning commission, this is gonna prevent this gentleman from operating the business, correct? Well, let me, let me just, actually, let me just see if I understand this, Sean, I'm sorry, I took a few minutes off, but, but, you know, that, that the concern that has been under discussion is really not, we're not attempting to address that under this legislation. What we're attempting to address under this legislation is because of his desire not to repair cars but to sell cars, that we are able to put some restrictions on that he's not subject to now under his repair. So it actually is an improvement over what the otherwise potential use of the property is, and we're able to do that because of his desire to sell.
Correct.
So, you know, I, you know, I'd certainly suggest that, that we, that we think about this in a bit of, of that light. Now, you know, that still doesn't change, you know, what any council member may want to do. Alderman Robinson?
So, Mr. Carter, if we do not amend this legislation, then can I come back later with some type of ordinance or something regarding the used car lots and it would be applicable to all the car lots, all the used car lots?
The only problem would be is if someone already has a use in place. Ms. Robinson, your amendment is fine and next time it comes through planning commission, next car lot, we'll word it that way. So you're, the way you worded it is not effective, I mean, that's fine and he's agreed to it.
Okay. Well, they probably got about ten more they could put on East Broadway, right? I'm sorry.
One of the things I think we're hopeful of, and, and obviously, you know, moving on East Broadway now, or even changing a business now, you know, for the next couple years is gonna have some, you know, some challenges associated with it. And I, you know, I think many of us hope that when that new roadwork gets completed, that then the uses of that real estate will become much more beneficial to do a variety of other things now. Now, that's, that's the hope, obviously. Where are we, on an amendment?
Yes, currently there's a motion and a second to amend, it would be section one, items two and three regarding the maximum number of cars, and Jason worded it, so if he could reword it.
Let me, let me, let me take one more, try refining my statement earlier. Section two would be amended to read as follows, maximum forty total cars on the front sales lot regardless of whether such cars are for sale. Section number three would read maximum of twenty total cars on rear storage lot regardless of the purpose for which such cars are being stored.
Who moved that?
Alderwoman Robinson.
Second by, is that the way y'all's amendment is? Any further discussion on the amendment? On the motion?
Bryant?
This is on the amendment.
That's on the amendment.
Okay.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
All right, we are now...
It's been read one time and it's ready for the second reading.
Second time.
No, it's ready to be read the second time.
All right, let's read it.
Okay.
This is an ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a car sales lot in a C-4 zone for certain real property located at 2415 East Broadway in the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas, second reading as amended.
Okay. Now it's ready for a motion to suspend the rules, if that's...
I'm gonna suspend the rules and place it on the third reading.
Second. Discussion?
Okay, Mayor, I guess, you know, one of the reasons why I voted for, against it earlier was the, the item under section two that provides for gravel in the front area. You know, y'all have heard me rail against this several times, as, as Broadway is redeveloped, we would, while it's not an area that I represent, I think all of us would be proud and like to see attractive businesses within that area. And, and number eight, while, while it does state that they'll eradicate grass, you know, there'll be gravel there, and I wish there was something we can do. And I'm not gonna press the point at this time, but as, as we go forward, you know, I hope Mr. Sanders would be cognizant of that and he and the owner could get together and do something about it once Broadway's complete.
Right now, we've got a motion for suspending the rules. Has there been a second? Second. Motion made and second to suspend the rules, on the motion?
Bryant?
No.
Ross?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
Mayor?
I think that's...
Four.
Well, mayor vote, yes.
On the emergency Bryant?
No.
Ross?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
Emergency clause filled.
So...
And that concludes new business.
What, what that means, Mr. Carter, what, how many days?
Sixty days, Mayor.
You won't be able to do this for sixty days. The emergency clause did not pass, so you can work with Sean and planning to make sure you do what you do in accordance with the fact that the emergency clause failed. We are at the end of the agenda. We have public comment, any council member? You know, I'm gonna reserve the last words for '07, but outside of that, public comments section is now open. Any council, no, any, any member of the audience care to say anything? Let me just make the final words, two thousand and seven have been a terrific, you going up there, Mr. Arden? Okay? Well, wasn't fast enough, was I, Mr. Arden?
I saw several cards filled out tonight, so I figured somebody would come up before me. I also would like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and hopefully that some of the things that happened in the city during this year won't happen again next year. Alderman Parker, I was going over in Lakewood the other day and I saw this big yellow thing out in the street. You know what I'm talking about? Speed bump.
Oh, my goodness.
The new kind.
One of those articles?
Yeah. And I was doing the speed limit and I thought, hmm, what's that? So I go right over the top. It didn't slow me down any. But anyway, it is a good thought to try to use those to save money, I appreciate that. I hope that everybody put on their agenda, New Year's resolutions to improve the things that go on in the city. Mr. Parker, I hope you don't argue with the water department anymore when they got the roadblock. Mr. Gaines, I hope you don't want to refer to policemen's parents a certain way. And Mayor, your deal still stands if you'll go out in the field with me. And you know what I'm talking about? You don't? Okay. But there is one request I would like to see happen, if possible. I understand we can put on our electric bill a note. There is several people that have been told more than I thought that they could not lock their fuse boxes by someone in the city. Is there any way we can put on that electric bill it is okay to lock the fuse boxes?
Obviously, there's a way, Mr. Arden, I doubt that we'll do it, but, you know, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll try to figure out a way to let everybody know that's interested.
Okay. Would you start using your microphone, please? We spent a lot of money on a good PA system and a lot of times tonight, we could not hear you. Everybody have a good New Years and look forward to taking you out in the field, Mayor.
Go ahead, Height, if you have a second.
Real quickly, I want to thank each council member, two thousand and seven has been a really good year and, and I appreciate the efforts and the cooperation of this council. I want to also send out, if I could just ask for one quick second, I'll be real fast. I want to underline, I think what I can speak for, the entire city's appreciation to our roughly eight hundred city employees, including our friends at wastewater, the library, and, and those that are a little bit out from under our umbrella. You know, I, I look out in the audience and I see some really dedicated and terrific city employees and it's no small measure that this city enjoys the benefits of, of their strong and tireless efforts. And also want to underline our appreciation to the members of the community, those that come and are active in our boards and commissions and, and simply come down here to be a part of, of this city government. We could not in any way do the things that we are able to do as a community unless all of those elements are involved and, and, and working together. And so I just wanted to end '07 with thanks and looking forward to '08. So I too join Mr. Arden as well as all of this council in thanking the community for the things past and looking forward to a real challenging, exciting, and, and a year in '08 that we're all gonna continue to do things that this community will be proud of. So God bless, have a happy New Year and we look forward to seeing you next year.
So move.
Very second, on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
[inaudible][1775.86]